I want to welcome everyone. This is the January 16th meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. I'm Scott Halopka, Chair of the Board. We will now start the meeting with a roll call to account for the members of the Board present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Aray?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hafer?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinle, I believe, was out today. Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Munoz?
Aye.
Ms. Panero?
Aye.
Mr. Schulman?
Aye.
Thank you. Will everyone please join me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to remind everyone to be sure to unmute your mics when you're speaking, but to mute them when you're not. First item, review of today's agenda. Are there any changes to the tentative agenda as published?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. In the January 9th email, you received draft minutes from the November 21st meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to review the draft minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the November 21st, 2024, meeting minutes? Not hearing any, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated.
Motion.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. First on our agenda tonight, we are honored to have County Executive Kathy Klausmeyer join us today to introduce the capital improvement program process. She'll be describing fiscal parameters, highlighting points of particular interest to the Board, and outlining her priorities for the fiscal year 2026-2031 capital budget and program. We'd now like to welcome the County Executive. He's hiding behind Steve.
I see some friendly faces here. It's great to see you all. Good afternoon, Chairman Halopka. Did I get it? I've been practicing today. It's a pleasure to see you and the members of the Baltimore County Planning Board today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you as you kick off the review of the 2026 capital budget. Before we begin, I want to say how honored I am to serve as the new County Executive, and I look forward to working with all of our employees and communities to continue building on our progress. The progress includes record investments in education, a more modern and efficient government, and our prized AAA bond rating. We've done all this by working together, and we are excited to continue doing so. For the fiscal 2025 budget investments, I want to start by looking at Baltimore County's fiscal 2025 budget, which funds important initiatives and needed services in every community. We're proud to continue record funding for the Baltimore County Public Schools with millions in capital spending. One for Delaney High School, and that's something we've been looking forward to for quite some time. A look, a new look for the Towson High School, and a replacement for Scotch Branch Elementary School. We are also continuing, continuing to deliver funding for our police and first responders so that they, residents feel safe and are safe. And to make sure every resident can enjoy our county's scenic beauty, we are continuing to invest in new recreation opportunities. Thanks to our efforts, we've opened two new recreation, recreation centers and five new parks across Baltimore County. We've continued to invest in residents of all ages, especially our seniors, who make up about a quarter of the county's population. We've delivered funding for a new North County Senior Center as well as Jacksonville Senior Center, so our older adults can age with dignity and care. And lastly, we're continuing to invest in our residents' quality of life with free transportation through the Towson Loop, millions of dollars for our housing opportunities funds, thousands of new trees for our urban communities, and our incredibly successful midge medication, not medication, they need medication, that's what they need, the mitigation efforts along Back River. In closing, we've been successful because of our strong partnerships, and as I begin my tenure as County Executive, I look forward to continuing to build on these partnerships. Just like under my predecessor, my administration will soon begin community town halls to hear directly from our residents and learn about their concerns and priorities. I know that the Planning Board will be speaking with county department heads and leaders from across the county soon, and I look forward to hearing your recommendations and working together. So thank you once again to all the members of the Board for your time and energy, and thank you again to the Chairman Halopka. Would you tell me, tell me?
Halopka.
Halopka. Okay.
It's like stuffed cabbage, jalapenos.
What's that?
It's like the stuffed cabbage, jalapenos.
Oh, okay. That sounds, that sounds good. Maybe I'll have that for dinner sometime. Okay, Halopka. For your, for your leadership, thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And our work together helps chart a bright future for Baltimore County. On behalf of all of our residents, I'm grateful for your willingness to serve and truly appreciate your commitment to the people of Baltimore County. So thanks, thank you each and every one of you for doing what you're doing. This is a big undertaking, so thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And welcome, and glad you're here. Board members, do you have any questions for the County Executive? If so, please remember to unmute your mic.
They're quiet tonight. Might be.
First, first meeting back. It takes a while to get back.
I know. Okay.
Not hearing anything? Thank you very much. We appreciate getting more of the details.
Okay, thank you very, very much.
We will now turn to the next item, which is the introduction of the basic services map.
Good afternoon. I'm pleased to inform you, this is only one page. My name's Andrew Brown. I'm an engineer and project manager in the sewer design section, and I am here on behalf of the Department of Public Works and Transportation to introduce the 2025 Draft Basic Services Maps for Public Water, Sewer, and Transportation. The basic services maps are part of the countywide master plan standards and guidelines relative to new development. These maps are updated annually per the county's zoning regulations and include information regarding areas that are deficient in public water, sewer, and transportation. The zoning regulations specify that on or before February 28th of each year, the Planning Board shall recommend to the County Council any proposed annual revisions to the basic services map. Last year, Bill 1724 was signed and enacted by the Baltimore County Council on May 9th, 2024, which adopted the revised maps for that year. As you may recall, deficiencies are defined for each basic services as follows. A deficiency in the water system is determined by a failing fire flow test that measures the residual water pressure at the nearest public fire hydrant. A deficiency in the public sewer system is determined by a lack of capacity to convey sewage flows, and a deficiency in the transportation system is determined by a lack of capacity to provide a standard level of service within arterial or, and arterial collector intersections. Level of service designations E and F are considered to be deficient. For this year's basic service map, the Water Design Section reported that there were no deficiencies in public water as defined by the zoning regulations. The Sewer Design Section reported one deficient area, which is the Richland Manor area. This is the same that was reported last year. And the Bureau of Traffic Engineering and Transportation Planning reports 11 deficient intersections that would, that would control development, and note that these are also the same intersections that they reported the prior year. So in conclusion, we'd like to request a public hearing for the 2025 Basic Services Maps, and during this hearing, we'll present more detail and detailed information on the specific deficiencies and areas of concern.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. At this point, are there any questions or comments for?
As part of your presentation, are we, are we going to hear why things haven't changed in a year?
That's certainly something we can include, we're going to include detailed information on each of the deficiencies.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that, that that is something that's included during the discussion.
Noted.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, do I have a motion?
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board set an in-person public hearing as specified under BCZR Section 4A 02.3.1 for Thursday, February 6, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. for the Board to receive comments and concerns from the citizens of Baltimore County on the 2025 Basic Services Map.
Do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. We look forward to hearing your presentation in a month. As a reminder, the public hearing will be in person on February 6th. The next items are some of those holdovers from 2024. First is the Baltimore County Landscape Manual update. This evening, we have the opportunity to discuss and then vote on the updated County Landscape Manual. As you may remember, this matter had a public hearing on November 7th, and then the project was tabled to get additional input from stakeholders. Ms. Sally Nash and Mr. Pete Gutwold from the Department of Permits, Approvals, and Inspections are here to further present and answer questions that the Board may have.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. How are you? As you know, we were here last November, November 7th, where we presented the updated Baltimore County Landscape Manual and the updated County Open Space and Greenway Manual. And today, we're here to present the amendments to these two manuals, which is based on community input we received at the hearing and also after working with these groups. For the Landscape Manual, we heard testimony, testimony from groups including Maryland Native Plant Coalition, Green Towson Alliance, Wild Ones Greater Baltimore, as well as many residents from the county. We set up a meeting with these groups that was held November 13th and discussed several of our ideas, which became the foundation of the amendments we have sent in advance of this meeting. The largest points we discussed were adding a requirement for a minimum percentage of native species to the manual. We also discussed adding information about harvesting rainwater, encouraging biodiversity, addressing climate change, and updating best practices for landscape maintenance. These groups worked together to present amendments to us, which we then took to our technical, and then we met again on December 5th. We took those recommendations back to our technical committee and produced the amendments you have before you, which represents input from both groups. Do you have any questions on the amendments we have presented for the Landscape Manual?
Ms. Panero? Sorry, Katie. So we made the, you made the changes. Were those changes then shared back with the groups? And are we good?
Right. Well, they both, the Maryland Native Plant Coalition did spend, send a letter of support back to you before this hearing.
Okay. Yeah, which you should have all gotten in an email. You didn't get it?
I was late today.
I missed it. Okay. Yeah. But I want to thank you and, you know, Mr. Gutwold and your department for, you know, going back and taking the time to meet with the, the various constituents, and it sounds like, you know, you were able to come to a mutual understanding, so that's.
Yes, we, we were able to reach consensus on almost every request.
Great. Okay.
Are the amendments open for comment? Like, do they go back to anybody for comment? Like, is there any opportunity for public input, other than just to the groups that change you for the amendments?
Well, depending on your action at this meeting, it would be referred to County Council, and there would be another opportunity for public testimony.
At County Council. Okay. And we received a copy of the amendments? Okay. It's a link. Got it.
If there are no further questions or comments, I will now entertain a motion.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board approves the 2024 updates to the Baltimore County Landscape Manual as amended by the Department of Permits, Approvals, and Inspections following the November 7th public hearing. The Board hereby submits the manual as amended following PAI meeting with necessary stakeholders to the County, excuse me, to the County Council for appropriate action.
Do I have a second? Now that we have a motion and a second, we will do a roll call vote. When I call your name, please say aye or nigh. Yes or no? I don't know. Mr. Aray?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinle is absent.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Munoz?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman? Yes. Thank you. The motion carries. Next, we have an opportunity to discuss and then vote on the updated Baltimore County Open Space Manual. As you remember, this matter had a public hearing on November 7th, and the project was tabled to get additional input from stakeholders. Again, Ms. Sally Nash and Mr. Pete Gutwold from the Department of Permits, Approvals, and Inspections are here to further present and answer any questions the Board may have.
Hello again. Yes, for the Residential Open Space and Greenway Manual update, we heard testimony from Neighbor Space of Baltimore County. We set up a meeting with this group as well, and that meeting was held November 26th. We discussed several of our ideas, which became the foundation of these amendments that you have before you. The largest points we discussed were adding recommendations about open space locations, clarifying the difference between open space and amenity open space, and clarifying that any change to residential open space that was approved as part of a PUD must be considered as a material amendment to the plan unless the County Council determines that it is not via resolution. These suggestions were all integrated into the amendments, and we had, I also saw a letter of support from Neighbor Space this week in support of the Open Space Manual.
Thank you. Any questions, comments about this manual or the changes that were made? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board approves the 2024 updates to the Baltimore County Open Space Manual as amended by the Department of Permits, Approvals, and Inspections following the November 7th public hearing. The Board hereby submits the manual as amended following PAI meeting with necessary stakeholders to the County Council for appropriate action.
Do I have a second? Second. We will now do a roll call vote. Mr. Aray?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Munoz?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman? Motion carries. Thank you, and again, thank you to you and your staff for, you know, taking the time to go back and, and meet with the groups and everyone. Sounds like it's come to an understanding. Appreciate that. Next, we have an opportunity to discuss and then vote on the Reisterstown Main Street Streetscape Action Plan. This matter had a public hearing on November 21st, and at that time, more input was requested, and the vote was delayed. Ms. Cooper from the Department of Planning, along with Crystal McCready and Vicki Almond of the Reisterstown Improvement Association, are here to further present and answer any questions the Board may have.
Hello. Hi. It's nice to see you guys. I'm Sidney Cooper. I am the district planner for District 2, and tonight, I'm here to reintroduce you to Crystal McCready, the Main Street Manager for Reisterstown Improvement Association, RIA. RIA was here in November to present the Streetscape Action Plan and the Design Guidelines to you all. There was a public hearing and a vote scheduled for the same evening. During that public hearing, a representative of St. John's Properties requested that the vote be tabled to this meeting because they had some things that they wanted to discuss with RIA. So since then, that meeting has taken place, and they've come to an agreement on both of the documents. So tonight, I have Crystal McCready here to do some presentations, to go over the changes for you. So she'll start with the Streetscape Action Plan, so without further ado, I'll turn it over to Crystal.
Okay, awesome. A little nervous. I put together a PowerPoint for you, and I'm just going to go over the edits that we agreed on, and I think you guys all have a copy in front of you. Okay. So I don't know if you want me to read the whole thing to you, or just kind of give you the highlights here, but we did, on the one side, I have the new updated Streetscape Action Plan with the edits put into it, and on the left side, I have included the changes. So on page 16, we inserted that paragraph about the action plans and goals into the page 16. On page 19, under Goal 3, we revised the first bullet point under Make a More Desirable Main Street, and then we revised the second bullet point under Make a More Desirable Main Street, and you can see the changes that we made. Is that okay for me to do it this way? Okay. Page 20, under Goal 5, we revised the bullet point under Create More Places for People, striking reference to action item 3.5. Under Goal 6, revised name for section, reconsidered the center turn lane, and we did explore more traffic calming instead, and you can see the changes. On page 3, under the chart, we revised item 2.6. We revised item 3.1. On page 24, we revised item 3.3, and we striked action item 3.9 in its entirety.
And since, I can't read it from here. What is?
You can't read them? Do you want me to read?
No, no. What is 3.9? I can't.
Oh, what was it? Encourage core hours through optional standardized lease language and business licensing. The intent is not to limit business hours, but to encourage uniform hours to attract Some of these were just wording things that we just had to go back and tweak. On page 26, we had to strike action item 5.3 in its entirety, and that was the other goal. Other items under Goal 5 have been renumbered. So when we got rid of that line, which was, I don't have it in here, I'm sorry, we had to move all the numbers around, so 5.4 became 5.3, 5.5 became 5.4, et cetera. On page 27, in action item 6.1, we had to strike the first sentence, so it would read as follows. Add landscape medium and/or extend the curb to include a site, landscape buffer at sidewalk. In action item 6.4, we revised as follows. Encourage the use of a shared parking agreement with tenants without dedicated off-street parking and nearby lots. On page 31, there's a map, and where those black dots are, is where we had to remove them. So the new book, if you go to the next slide, shows that those items were taken out. And then one more item on the appendix, the appendix page, we had to add the following statement. The documents contained in the appendix are included for background information only and are not part of the action plan. That is all I have for the edits that we did for the Streetscape Action Plan.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
On the page 31?
Yes.
The six icons that were removed, what were they?
All right.
And why were they removed?
Would you like to talk?
Hi, my name is Patsy Malin. I'm a land use counsel for St. John's Properties, and first, I wanted to thank the Board for agreeing to give us the opportunity to talk to RIA, to talk about these issues. Mr. Pelon could not be here tonight, but he wanted me to express his sincere thanks for the opportunity to talk this, talk through these issues. For those of you who weren't, may not have been here for the prior presentations, St. John Properties owns a business park directly behind where those three dots are at the top. Those buildings are a business park. They also own a lot that extends onto Reisterstown Road. They were concerned with some of, how some of these guidelines or design aspects would impact a business park. So RIA agreed, or RIA agreed to sit down with us and talk through these issues, and some of them were just, like Crystal said, some of them were just language changes where instead of establish, the word was encourage, or one of the things they wanted was business hours to be set. But when we talked about it, we realized that was to encourage people to come all at the same time, to have, to attract, you know, patrons to stores and things like that. So again, those, those kinds of things were some of the aspects. I think some of the dots that were removed were a pop-up shop. So St. John just wanted to make sure that they weren't being, obligating themselves to have pop-up events or shared parking, because some of their tenants, you know, their leases wouldn't allow for shared parking. So that's why those, some of those dots were taken off, just with respect to that. They have fully agreed to continue to work with Main Street and be a part of Main Street. They just wanted to protect their interests. And I can answer any other specific questions.
Thank you. Will that work? Is that good? Okay.
Other?
And then I guess we can do the same thing for the design guidelines?
Let me just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay.
I'm used to running meetings.
Are there any other comments, questions? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion on the Reisterstown Main Street Streetscape Action Plan.
To be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board approves a Reisterstown Main Street Streetscape Action Plan as amended following the November 21st public hearing and recommends the plan to be forwarded onto County Council for review and adoption as an amendment to Master Plan 2030.
Do I have a second? Now that we have a motion and a second, I will do a roll call. Mr. Aray?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Munoz?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman? Yes. Thank you. The motion carries. Finally, we have the opportunity to discuss and then vote on the Reisterstown Main Street Design Guidelines. This matter had a public hearing on November 21st, and at that time, more input was requested, and the vote was delayed. Once again, Ms. Cooper from the Department of Planning, along with Crystal McCready, yeah, of the Reisterstown Improvement Association, are here to further present and answer any questions the Board may have.
Thank you, guys. So the same thing in this, in this PowerPoint presentation. On page 1, we added the following paragraph after the last paragraph. On page 2, we revised the first sentence of the third paragraph, so it reads as follows. New construction and renovations in the district should align with the established character of Reisterstown by including at least some of the following design elements. Page 3, we edited the first paragraph to read as follows. An opportunity exists to further add to the character of Reisterstown Main Street with the addition of new buildings and infill construction. The design of these structures should contribute to the charming, walkable, pedestrian-friendly environment desired by Reisterstown, where practical, where practical, practical primary facades and entrances should be oriented to Main Street. Buildings should be sited with setbacks between 10 feet min and 25 feet max, as allowed by zoning requirements and respectful of adjacent properties. On page 4, at the top of the page, before the numbered recommendations, we added the following, our recommendations for landscaping. On page 7, in the first paragraph under design and compatibility, we revised the second sentence, so it reads as noted. Lighting sites, styles of both poles and fixtures shall be a style compatible with the design and architectural style of the building. If seeking grant funding, proposed layout and fixture types should be submitted for review to the Reisterstown Improvement Association with. Improvement Association with the building design package. And we added the following statement to the third paragraph under signage. So I don't think I need to read all that to you. Page 15, Guidelines in Action, 127 and 135 Main Street. This was a page that we added to the book, inclusion of Riceford Town Business Center for Potential Development as an example of what could happen with that space. And then again, we added the same to the appendix page, a statement that states the documents contained in the appendix are included for background information only and are not part of the design guidelines. Because we break out into the study groups and how we, how we got to where we got with our guidelines. I think that's all the changes we had to do on this one.
So if you could just go back to the, the new page to be added. So this was actually one of the things that I think was very helpful, is that we listened to the concerns about what could go on the corner parcel. And St. John's had Design Collective basically quickly put together based upon their, their likes and dislikes, an image, no, the...
We had previous...
Yeah, but this is the one specifically for, for the property. Yes, that one. So this was, I think, very helpful in everyone coming to a consensus that they felt comfortable with about what would happen on the parcel. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. No need to be nervous. We don't bite. It's all good. Just a quick question, and I think I asked this last time. So these are design guidelines, like to implement future development and design, right? But obviously, all of the existing businesses, they're just partnering to kind of like get there, right? Like, there's no deadline for them to start meeting these guidelines.
In fact, a lot of them, we run facade improvement grant programs, and a lot of them are able to look at these guidelines in their building and then kind of talk to us about what we would be able to help fund and, and have an idea instead of them just doing it by themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? I want to thank both the Riceford Town Improvement Association, St. John's, for again, you know, taking the time to meet and sort of sounds like you were able to work out all of the issues. So that's, certainly makes our life a lot easier.
We worked closely on Main Street, so it was good that we got to this point.
That's great. I will now entertain a motion.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board approves a Riceford Town Main Street Design Guidelines as amended following the November 21st public hearing and recommends the guidelines be forwarded on to County Council for review and adoption as an addition to the Comprehensive Manual of Development Policies.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
We will now do a roll call vote. Mr. Schulman, Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Ms. Munoz?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Array?
Yes.
Why always make Peter have to do the first one?
He decided to go backwards.
Thank you. The motion carries.
I cannot thank you enough. This is a huge milestone for us, so really appreciate it. Thank you.
And good luck with the future steps. We will now hear of recent County Council legislation of interest to the board.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know, my name is Jennifer Nugent. Recent County Council legislation of interest to the board. First one, Bill 9224, zoning regulations, uses permitted in the BM zone or contractor storage yard for the purpose of permitting a contractor storage yard under certain circumstances and in certain areas of the BM zone, and generally relating to uses permitted in the BM zone and contractor storage yard. Bill 9324, again, zoning regulations, housing for the elderly in MLR and ML zones for purpose of permitting housing for the elderly as a principal use to a property located in the manufacturing light restricted zone and the manufacturing light zone of a certain contiguous acreage, and generally relating to housing for the elderly in the MLR and ML zones. Bill 9424, zoning regulations for uses permitted in the ML zone, commercial kennels, for permitting a commercial kennel under certain circumstances in the ML zone, and generally relating to uses permitted in the ML zone and commercial kennels. Bill 9524, I believe that's a typo, says 9525, zoning regulations, bulk regulations in the OT zone for amending certain bulk height and area regulations in the OT zone for certain residential uses within large commercial office parks if located in Owens Mills, and generally relating to the OT zone. Bill 9924, zoning regulations for hookah and vapor lounges, use permits, for the purpose of moving certain restrictions on hours of operations for a hookah lounge or vapor lounge from the definitions of said business to a special regulation section, establishing certain definitions related to regulations of a hookah or vapor lounge, requiring a hookah lounge or vapor lounge to obtain a use permit, establishing a use permit requirements and restrictions, including certain distance regulations for residential areas and certain video surveillance system requirements, establishing a permit suspension or replication process, permitting the immediate suspension of a permit under certain circumstances, and establishing an appeal process and penalties for violations. Bill 100-24, zoning regulations, conversion of boarding or rooming houses in DR zones, for the purpose of permitting the conversion of a boarding or rooming house to apartments, setting conversion rate for boarding or rooming units, requiring certain facilities and parking for each apartment so converted, and generally relating to boarding or rooming houses in the DR zone. Resolution 4724, which is establishing 2025 redistricting commission, for a resolution of the Baltimore County Council establishing the Baltimore County Redistricting Commission for the 2026 general election.
Thank you, Ms. Nugent. Any questions? I guess I have a procedural question. Do we have to wait till 5:30 for the CIP? That's already set. So that's what I kind of, kind of thought that might be the case. This is the conclusion of our agenda. As a reminder, the Planning Board will hold a CIP Subcommittee Meeting at 5:30 PM. The meeting will be in this room. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
There's food in the back for those of you who are interested, and I'll see you back here at 5:30.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Emily Brophy, and I am the Chair of the Planning Board Subcommittee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program. I would like to acknowledge the committee members present with us this evening. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hafer?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinold?
Aye.
Mr. Hillepka?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Muneses?
Aye.
Ms. Panero?
Aye.
Mr. Schulman?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Tonight, we are meeting in a work session to hear from Ms. Lauren Buckler, Director of the Baltimore County Department of Public Works and Transportation. After the presentation, members of the committee will have the opportunity to ask questions of the presenter. Before Ms. Buckler begins her presentation, I want to note that I know there are members of the community in attendance of tonight's meeting. This meeting has not been designated to accept comments from citizens. The Planning Board held a citizen input meeting on October 17th, 2024, which was the opportunity for the board to hear from citizens on their issues concerning the capital improvement program. And now I would like to invite Ms. Buckler of the Department of Public Works and Transportation to begin her presentation.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. I'm pleased to present the budget on behalf of the Department of Public Works and Transportation. We are always looking for ways to serve the residents of Baltimore County and how we can serve them better. We're a multifaceted department centered on quality of life. For many, our responsibilities encompass a variety of things, including oversight of the sewer systems, sewer rehabs, pumping stations, maintenance of storm drains, road repaving and pothole filling, storm, snow and storm debris removal, fleet management for heavy-duty equipment, bridge maintenance, traffic engineering, safety signs, and our traffic calming program, transportation services including county ride and the loop, solid waste collection services, recycling and waste diversion initiatives, and engineering projects such as sanitary sewer rehabilitation, water main replacement, and green infrastructure. In response to this quickly evolving landscape, we are embracing more data-driven practices towards enhancing our decision-making process. This strategic shift includes leveraging data to help us optimize our services, improve efficiency, and better address the needs of Baltimore County residents in real time. Our mission remains steadfast to build a better Baltimore County through strategic investments in public works and transportation, sustainable practices, acceptable, exceptional customer service, and the integration of data-driven approaches. As we press forward and adopt the evolving needs of our county, we are consistently mindful of our purpose and our pledge to you and the residents of Baltimore County. In the past year, DPWT has achieved several noteworthy milestones. We have, within solid waste, we serve just around 25, 250,000 single-family homes and approximately 88,000 multifamily units with once-a-week trash and recycling pickup. In calendar year 2024, we had 604-plus tons of municipal solid waste processed in our recycling center. We processed 64,000 tons of recyclables and collected 6.5 million in revenue from the sale of our recycled material. We began an organics pilot for composting in January of 2024 at Eastern Sanitary Landfill. We have been collecting from 100 homes in the Perry Hall area, and we've collected 318 tons of organics material through this program. There's also a mix of commercial accounts in that as well to supplement the volume. We have applied for a grant through the EPA to expand this program and make it permanent, and we're hopeful that we would be considered for that. With our efforts to expand our recycling program, we've started to evaluate our MRF, that's our Materials Recovery Facility, where we handle our recycling. We're close to the end of our useful life. We're at capacity. So we've started a, a assessment to look at what we need to do there. We are expecting that to be concluded, you know, within early 2025. That's being funded through ARPA federal dollars to do that study. Eastern Sanitary Landfill, as you may also know, is reaching capacity. So we have been working with MDE on permitting the vertical expansion of this site. The vertical expansion is expected to expand our lifespan by seven years. We're currently in phase three of this process. There's five phases before the determination is granted to approve us for the vertical expansion. Under the current lifespan, we have until approximately 2033, based on the volume of trash that we are processing. To accomplish and underscore our dedication to fostering sustainable and thriving communities as we forge ahead, we're continuing to work towards a future where our environment is safeguarded, references are conserved, resources are conserved, and our communities can flourish. Moving on to highways, we have been changing direction and making sure we are making equitable decisions. We are making data-driven decisions. We're using best practices, and we've implemented a pavement management system towards that approach. We have been proactively working through this approach. The approach will extend the life cycle of our roads in an impartial, transparent, and objective manner. It's comprehensive. We went out and did street assessments of all of our roads. So we assessed over 8,000 roads in the county using X-ray type LiDAR system to check the condition of all the roads instead of just one individual's eyesight versus somebody else's. We've ranked all of our roads on a scale of 0 to 100. The technical value allows us to know, you know, what roads need to be paved and be able to plan for this. We are looking to do this assessment every three years. Based on the data that we've gathered so far, if we brought all the roads in the county up to an average rating, which is in the 60s, it would be about 400 million. We work with a budget of about 11 million a year for repaving. So this gap happens to be exactly the amount of highway user revenue that the county has not received from the state over the last decade. So the PCI index, which is the Pavement Condition Index, it's assigned to all the roads, we're going to use it for short-term, midterm, and long-term goals. It helps us measure outcomes and constraints with our current budget and empowers us to make decisions based on that budget. So in the last year, we resurfaced 143 lane miles, and we've replaced 47 lane miles of concrete curb and gutter. So a lot of the roads that are ranked poorly at this point, it may be because they're waiting on curb and gutter. So we have to do one before we do the other. Bureau of Utilities, sewers are the largest capital requirement in DPWT. We maintain more than 3,000 miles of sewer lines buried under our streets and along our waterways. We have 120 pump stations that feed them. From the 2005 Federal Consent Decree, Baltimore County will invest more than 1.5 billion to ensure the improvements of the system and eliminate sewer overflows. Just going to restate that, 1.5 billion since 2005 on our sewer program alone. I'm pleased to share the significant achievements in our Utilities Bureau showcasing their commitment to public safety, environmental responsibility, and financial accountability. Through 2024, Bureau of Utilities Pumping and Treatment Division has significantly moved forward with a proactive approach. So they maintain the 2,600 grinder pumps throughout the county. So these are properties typically on the peninsulas on the eastern side of the county where there was a health project at some point to connect them to public sewer. Because of the elevation of the property, it has to be pumped out to the public sewer system. So they're individual pumps located on each property, 2,600 of them on individual residential properties. Over the last year, we fielded 630 calls from those residents at those properties related to these grinder pumps. Of those calls, 328 required a full pump replacement. The division was able to rebuild in-house 301 of those 328 pumps, which saves us $750,000 in the last year. So we're really fortunate to have some great staff that can take matters into their own hands and help make sure we are reduced reuse recycling on these pumps and saving us money in the process. Next slide. We have also been partnering with the Department of Health over about the last two years. What we found is coming back from COVID, a lot of restaurants had closed down during COVID or gone to minimal staffing. We've had a lot of changeover in who's running these restaurants and their familiarity with the fats, oils, and grease program. So we were having a lot of significant backups, especially in the Towson area and this downtown corridor where we have a lot of restaurants. So we've partnered to do a lot of checks through the Health Department. The Health Department is responsible for inside these facilities. So they go in and they're checking that they're following best practices. And we were able to pair that with our data for where we're having overflows or backups related to fats, oils, and grease. This is some ongoing inspections going on, but we've had, we have in the downtown Towson area, approximately 30 high-risk bog generators that were part of this operation between us and Health to reduce that. So we haven't had any major issues since the Health Department was able to get in and make sure the staff in these facilities understand what they need to do on the inside to prevent issues on the outside. Our Pipeline Maintenance Division has the responsibility for both emergency response and preventative maintenance, the cleaning program for our sewer program. We are proactively in the last year cleaned 1,610 pipe segments throughout the year. This proactive approach reduces blockages, prevents backups, and averts sewer overflows. Our Construction Division within Utilities manages small and medium-sized repairs in-house. So in the last year, they did 606 sewer repairs and 622 storm drain repairs. These can be anything from manholes to outfalls. And it really also does help us balance the budget with having in-house staff go out and do some of these more minor repairs. Towards the storm drain side, they have a $1 million budget bi-annually to make repairs on the storm drain system. These achievements underscore our unwavering commitment to the public safety, environmental stewardship, and fiscal responsibility. So Metro, Metro Operations, for those of you that don't know, is our interface on billing for the water and sewer system and tracking what that billing is. In the, over the recent history, we have increased approximately 12 million and 21 million over the last two years, which is our ongoing work in that section to really improve the billing process. We have decreased our average response times for customer appeals from 63 days to 15 days. These are customers calling in saying, something's wrong with my bill. Somebody take a look at my bill. Something doesn't seem right. We had also, through this division, taken a proactive approach on high consumption and made sure that we were reaching out to customers... and made sure that we were reaching out to customers that looked like their consumption was over a certain percentage from the previous year proactively, so they could look for leaks in their system and try to make adjustments in advance. We are down this year five percent of accounts in the high-consumption category, which is good, which means that proactive reaching out has made people go take a look and figure out what's causing the leaks or the overuse in their system and bring that back down. We have also been partnering with an outside contractor to repair and close five-thousand meters that have issues, so these could be meters where we're getting a zero read and going out to the site and figuring out why it's zero. Is the meter busted? Does it need to be repaired? Is bypass foul and what's going on? So that is what has helped us recoup a lot of this funding, this additional twelve-million dollars, getting these reads to be right, so we're being able to bill for the proper water consumption, sewer usage. Over the next year, we are working on a rollout with Baltimore City for a new, updated, more modern quarterly bill from the city. The city's on a different platform than us, which makes things a little complicated, so we're trying to move onto the same platform, which will make things more straightforward for our residents as they're looking at their water bills. On Transportation, we have really focused on safety. We're making meaningful strides to enhance it. We're utilizing the FY24 funding allocated for traffic initiatives and safety studies. With that, we've updated our Highway Safety Plan and our Vision Zero Plan. These efforts are designed to reduce traffic fatalities and serious injuries by taking a proactive data-driven approach to identifying and addressing critical safety challenges. With this updated framework, we've been focusing on high-risk areas, applying proven safety measures, and fostering collaboration with community stakeholders and transportation agencies. Our Vision Zero Plan looks to take a bold step forward and eliminate serious traffic incidents altogether for safer roadways in Baltimore County. Within the realm of traffic enhancements, we've been working on Honeycomb Boulevard. This was funded two years ago in the budget, so we're at about sixty percent design at this point. We're looking to be completed in design in spring 2025 with construction shortly after, depending on permitting process and the property acquisitions needed for the project. We're proud to continue the work on the feasibility studies and design work for several key trails and a network, building on the momentum of the 2023 Bike and Pedestrian Plan. We are working on enhancing our trail network, creating safer, more accessible routes for cyclists and pedestrians. We're underscoring our commitment to sustainable infrastructure that supports active transportation and improves the quality of life for all of our residents. Looking ahead, we're eager to complete Baltimore County's first-ever protected bike lane, scheduled for implementation in the spring, and will create more accessible infrastructure for cyclists and multimodal transportation options. We recognize the importance of embracing new technology, so we have piloted two locations for LED sign technologies. You see like a flashing stop line to try to enhance traffic calming in the area and draw people's attention to the stop. We're eager to expand this technology and promote it to more areas to increase driver awareness and promote safer travel throughout the area. In Engineering, we have reviewed sixty-eight development plans over the last year, eighty-four active design projects that are on our side, so we review both developments that are going to interface with county infrastructure, and then we have our own projects for county infrastructure that that section handles. We advertise ten design contracts for us within DPWT and then twelve projects for other agencies. We do the construction procurement on behalf of other agencies in Baltimore County, like Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability or Property Management. In the last year, we installed over three miles of new sewer mains and thirty-three miles of sewer mains were rehabbed. We did six-point-five miles of new and replacement water mains, and we had six active water and sewer pumping station improvement projects. In 2024, after a multi-year effort, DPWT and Permits have been working together to update the county's floodplain regulations. We did a lot of outreach to the development community, the builder community, any residents impacted by these floodplain communities, and they are now in effect, which puts us in compliance with FEMA, which is, you know, was a great, great work from the department and great partnership with Permits. We've also partnered with PAI to do a three-year phased-in increase for developer securities. The unit cost for public infrastructure hadn't been updated since 1999, and consequently, this made it so we didn't have the funds if we had to step in for a developer that stepped out and didn't finish the public infrastructure, because we weren't, we weren't holding enough security for those line items to be able to go in and finish something like paving or utility work for that community if the developer walked away. The public infrastructure cost took effect January 2024, next increase January 2025, and the final will be 2026. After that, it's an annual update to stay with the CPI index. Our Surveys Division started a new program working with solid waste to monitor landfill capacity. We've been doing drone flights over Eastern Sanitary Landfill nine times in 2024 to make sure we can assess the active cell and the rate in which it's being filled. This helps us refine projects for the remaining life of the landfill. Next, for our water and sewer infrastructure, it's important to talk about the difference between our basic service maps, our master plan amendments, and our triennial reports. I know a lot of those come before you, and we get questions every time they come before you. So talking about the basic service maps, which you heard about earlier this evening, they are Baltimore County-specific. They're a tool for urban planning and infrastructure management. They highlight two critical areas, areas of special concern and deficient areas. Areas of special concern, we monitor sewer capacities closely due to increasing volumes. This gives a heads-up to development or change in property use. It's a precautionary sign that there's issues in that area, and it's going to be looked at more closely when it comes through. Deficient areas, on the other hand, are where wastewater flow exceeds eighty percent of the treatment plant's capacity. So the map that you may have gotten a copy of earlier, and there'll be another presentation on, the only area for deficiency is the Richland Manor area, which has its own wastewater treatment plant at the moment. Moving to the triennial report, this is mandated by MDE in the Code of Maryland, so it requires us to adopt a comprehensive plan for water and sewage aligned with the county's land use plan and requires review every three years. This is a commitment to sustainable development. It's more than a statutory obligation. It's, it ties in with potential state funding and implications for noncompliance if we are in noncompliance. We introduced the most recent triennial report to the Planning Board in 2024. Since then, it's been approved by County Council and MDE, so we have another three years before we would go through that cycle. That cycle is consistent for all jurisdictions in Maryland, unlike the basic service maps. We also have a mechanism in place for water and sewer master plans. So this is from the executive order from 1990, and this process allows property owners on private wells and septic systems to petition for changes in the water and sewer and land use designations. So these are a pivotal step in ensuring future service connections to the public water and sewer, aligning private development with public infrastructure, and those come before you every year. Finally, I wanted to touch on the health of our sewer sheds and the critical decisions made about the development within our sewer sheds. Definitions matter. Structural condition is referring to the physical state of our pipes. Capacity is the volume those pipes can hold, and another term that gets put in with this is pipe rehabilitation. This is when we go in and enhance pipe longevity and prevent rainwater infiltration, increasing sewage capacity without enlarging the pipes, so we're lining the existing pipes that are there. As the county continues to grow and renew, monitoring development is crucial. Each proposed development plan undergoes reviews by DPWT Engineering, Water, Sewer, Highways, Stormwater, and Traffic. They come through the Development Plans Review Section of the Department of Permits, Approvals, and Inspections. We have weekly meetings with PAI to make sure we're all on the same page with what's coming through them and what's coming through our design sections. Specifically with regard to the Jones Falls Sewer Shed, because this one comes up with all of these other reports that we do, we have invested twenty-eight million since 2013 in this sewer shed. So a lot of times you hear reference to old reports prior to us investing twenty-eight million in this specific sewer shed. And that map you see up there with all the different colors on it are all the different areas where we've invested money in this sewer shed to improve it. We have plans for another thirteen million in this sewer shed. We've done work on replacing valves, relining pipes, done smoke and dye testing, which is where we check to make sure nobody's rain gutters are connected into our sewer system, so we put the smoke in and see whose house it comes up in front of, and then ask them nicely to disconnect from our sewer system. So we're doing a lot of work in this area, we've got a lot of work planned, things are great. Consent decree update. So we've spent over nine-hundred-million to date on critical infrastructure of the overflow structures in the sewage system. There's an additional five-hundred-and-fifty-million projected for additional projects already accounted for in our six-year CIP and prior authorized funding. It should be highlighted that of the original forty-four sewer overflow structures, we have closed thirty-four of them, which is huge progress, huge progress. So these are structures that were designed into the system well before most of us were born, that were designed to overflow into the environment. That's clearly not best practice anymore, which is the reason that Baltimore County was under the consent decree and a lot of other jurisdictions throughout the country. We are in the process of closing seven more of those structures this winter. Projects are under construction, they're contracted, the work is happening, and those structures will be closed. So that leaves us with three, and those three are relief points along the Baltimore City-County line, and we have been working closely with the city, with our partners at the state and the federal government, to make sure our consent decree aligns with the city's consent decree, and we can work, move forward on getting those closed in the future. So in conclusion, our unwavering commitment to building a better Baltimore County is firm, and our mission and dedication, we remain committed to maintaining the integrity of our infrastructure, ensuring its resilience, and evolving to challenges. I extend my sincere thanks to your support on behalf of our mission, and I also just want to thank all of my team that's here tonight, supporting it, pulls all this together. DPWT has a big budget, a lot of infrastructure to work with, and it takes a big team to make sure that's all taken care of. I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Buckler, and your team for being here. Board members, does anybody have any questions?
Good evening. Thank you for your presentation. It was very thorough. I applaud you for your focus on data-driven decision-making and data-driven processes, and I have some questions kind of along those lines. The first has to do with the annual collection schedule that we received kind of in December, January. I've been contacted by a lot of individuals in the community who are concerned because the calendar's gone, and I myself find the written explanation of when pickups occur on holidays and during the week of holidays to be very unclear and confusing. I'd like to know about the customer experience testing that you all did before you made a decision to do away with the calendars.
So we tried something new, and clearly it's created a lot of heartburn, and we recognize that. So what we're working on right now is making sure that our website has a way that you can print a calendar. The collection schedule didn't change, so if you were a Monday pickup, you're still a Monday pickup. So even if you pull up last year's calendar, it will match on the days. It's not going to match on the numerical dates, obviously, because the dates and the days of the week change, but the days of the week are the same for you.
Was there any consumer testing before the change was made?
There was an internal
Okay, that's what I thought.
...to make a change and try something different, and now we are dealing with that change.
My second point along those lines, as you talked about January 2026, is a change to the online billing portal for water bills. So I strongly urge you to urge whoever you're working with in the city to make sure there's customer experience testing, and don't take the word of the product developer that it's the best thing since sliced bread, because as you can see from this experience with the calendars, there needs to be real testing. And the fact of the matter is, if you truly want to be a data-driven organization, you've got to do some customer experience testing and gather the data from the customers before you make those kind of changes.
We will definitely take that into consideration.
My third question, and this was early on in your presentation, you said, which landfill is going to be filled in 2033?
The county only has one active landfill, Eastern Sanitary.
So given all the issues with NIMBY and getting people prepared for new landfills and things like that, it doesn't seem to me that it's too early to start preparing for what happens in 2023, I mean, 2033 and beyond. So what's happening preliminarily in 2025 to get ready for eight years from now?
So that's the vertical expansion that will get us another seven years on top of that. We've done a lot of outreach. Part of this phased process from Phase Three of Five is a lot of outreach to the neighboring communities. We're going up vertically, not out horizontally. We're not the only ones undergoing this process right now. Baltimore City and Anarundel County are also both going through the same process to go up with their landfills. So there's, you know, I guess, good experience with MDE right now, that we're not alone, that we're all going through this process and this phased process to go out and do these community meetings and make sure we're communicating. We've also really taken a lot of steps forward in solid waste for diversion efforts. We've put in place a couple other recycling programs that we didn't have before, textile recycling. You know, we have partnerships on what we do with bicycles. We have, when you go to the landfill drop-off area, both at all the sites, there's an area where you can see all the different things that you can personally separate out, and we do a lot more engagement to try to get people to separate out those things.
And my last issue is, during the discussion of the Transportation Section, I'm just interested in the evaluation strategy, or what do you do once you've made changes to, when you're trying to improve the safety? You talked about the safety aspect of this and making changes to certain intersections and things like that. Do you then follow up and do some type of evaluation to see what your return on investment is in some way, some kind of outcome measures or something?
So we do traffic studies, we do counts, and we look at speed, and we look at incident reports from police. We have a regular, there's a regular tri-agency meeting between us and State Highway and Baltimore County Police and State Police to talk through problem areas and from the traffic side, and what we can do on different sides to address it. That's also the same group that gets together for the Vision Zero Plan, Strategic Highway Safety Plan, and make sure we're all aligned and looking for the same outcomes at the end of the day, and that outcome comes down to that data, is what do we get out of these traffic studies before, what do we get after? So, yes.
So you do pre-post.
Yes.
Exactly, okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Hinton?
Yes, thank you again. I do appreciate the presentation. I thought it was very thorough. I understand that change can be difficult, but often it is necessary, right? You take a first step, you recognize the shortcomings, and, you know, we'll figure it out. I don't want to focus too much on the water and sewer as that's like the bulk of your presentation. I know we'll talk more about it. I wanted to learn a little bit more from your perspective on the Loop. How successful has the Loop been for the Towson area, and are there any plans to bring that to the White Marsh-Middle River area, as that is the heartbeat of Baltimore County's future in that area?
The Loop has been very successful, so it's doing great in the Towson area. We have done feasibility studies to look at the expansion. The two initial areas targeted for expansion were the Owens Mills area and the Catonsville area. After study through that feasibility process, Owens Mills came out higher in benefits in the end. We have not looked at the White Marsh Perry Hall area specifically. We've had ongoing conversations with Trade Point Atlantic about that area and their desires there. We are pursuing grants to be able to fund an expansion of the Loop and then be able to look at other areas from there. So, yes, we want to expand, it's going to take money, and we're working on trying to get that money to go with the studies that we have in place.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Hillepka?
A couple of questions. You mentioned that you've got a composting program that you're, you know, just rolling out, that it might be broadened. How much broader, I mean, you said a hundred homes, so how much broader are we talking?
Right now, it's a hundred homes. You know, ideally, perfect world, it would be everywhere, but that takes time and money and education. And what we have found so far preliminarily with this hundred homes is the volume that we get from the homes is pretty low on an individual home basis, which makes sense, right? So that's being supplemented. We're partnered with MES, Maryland Environmental Services, on this, and they're able to supplement collection from some collection from some commercial areas. So we're in conversations with BCPS, with the community colleges, with the correction system, on some of those bigger entities that would generate more waste because we need a certain volume to make it work. So trying to balance that, and this pilot has really helped us work through some of those logistics as to how this could work.
In that regard, school system?
Yeah, BCPS.
Okay.
We have been talking to them. They have several schools in a pilot right now that they had contracted with another entity separate from us doing our pilot. They're looking to expand, we're looking to expand, so we're trying to find that sweet spot of where this would work for both of us.
You also talked about that there's, you're building one section of separated bike lane. Where? Okay. And are there thoughts, plans to extend that anywhere?
In a perfect world, yes. You know, we do have the Bike and Ped Master Plan that talks about where we want to have that network. We do have regular coordination means, meetings between our bike section, our traffic planning section, our road design section, our highway section to talk about where we can connect some of this infrastructure and where we're getting requests, because we may be getting a request for a sidewalk, but maybe if we look at it as a group, it makes more sense as a protected bike lane. So we're trying to tie all that together as we move forward.
And then my last question, well, actually, two questions. Did you, am I hearing it right? You said you had about 2,600 grinder pumps?
I believe that's the number.
And 600 had to be replaced?
300 and some needed replacement. And we did three of them in-house instead of buying a new pump.
Right.
I will tell you that.
Is that a typical year? I mean, that just seems like a pretty
It's a typical year. You know, grinder pumps go up on a regular basis. They don't have that long of a lifespan to begin with.
That's why I was curious what the typical lifespan is.
Um.
Couple of years, it sounds like.
Five, 10 years, probably depending on what's happening with that grinder pump, what it's connected to. And we're also taking a harder look at what it's connected to, if there's been expansion with what it's connected to, and if what's there is just going to keep blowing up because it can't handle the volume anymore, what else happened there?
And then a last question. So I live down in the Dundalk area. Of course, with the collapse of the Key Bridge, there's lots of stuff going on there. I know there's been talk about like wanting to try and change the connections. I know these are more state roads than county roads, but given the sort of, you know, the timing that now, everything's down right now, so if you're going to do something, even if it's not as high on the list, has there been any thought of trying to move things around, or I guess in particular, the connection between burning and getting over to Trade Point?
Yes, 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 to all those things. So we have some federal funding to look at the connection on burning, but like, I don't want to get too excited because it's a very limited amount of funding. It's like 100 and 200K. It's very limited, and it's to do the feasibility of that. So we are looking at that. Separately, we've had a lot of very good conversations with MDTA about the tolling. So they've kept the tolls off since the bridge went down because people are turning around and, you know. They're tracking the numbers of who's turning around compared to when they had the tolls on and when they turned the tolls off, and they're seeing a significant uptake in people making that turnaround since the tolls have been off, which tells me we had traffic in the community that didn't need to be in the community because it was just turning around. So we've asked MDTA, as they're redesigning the bridge, to take a look at where that tolling hits. It's electronic tolling, it's not a toll booth anymore. So can they move where that is in relation to where that turnaround is, and does that help with some of this neighborhood traffic? And we do have regular meetings with them about what's going on there.
Yeah. And then sort of in that same vein, are you doing much monitoring of the truck traffic going through, you know, coming up Hollabird, coming, cutting through the communities and...
There's a lot of restricted roads in the area for truck traffic, and there's still, I know we hear from the police side, there's still continuous violations on those roads. You know, we can put up a lot of signs that say, "Don't come through here," but if they do, then you got to catch them. So that's where we're working with our partners on the law enforcement side on this. We have done some truck traffic studies in the area. We're continuing to watch the area, especially as we work through what happens with the Key Bridge.
And then my sort of last question, you talked about these road condition surveys that we were doing, the LiDAR. Is that publicly available?
Softly, yes. It is a layer on my neighborhood that you can pull up. It, it's very heavy data. So it's each segment of each road is measured. So when you go in and click on a road, like Joppa Road, it's not a score for all of Joppa Road, it's a score for each segment. So you can go through and click on that and see that. It's data as of when the scans were done, too. So if we've gone in and paved in the last year, it's not necessarily catching that yet. We're trying to get that synced up so that our GIS team updates that as the paving happens. So it's there, you can find it if you go looking. I can send you a link to it. If you know what you're looking at, it's going to make sense. I think for the average citizen, it's not, it's going to be too data-intensive to look at.
Part I wanted to look at the roads where I know trucks are going through the Dundalk area and how that's impacting the wear and tear.
Yeah. So I can make sure we send you a link so you can see
Thank you.
...what this data looks like.
Okay, Mr. Heckman, you had a question?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I especially liked the slide you put in there this year about the Jones Falls watershed. I believe I'm the person that always asks that question.
We're going to hit it off, but we're still going to have it, aren't we?
Yeah, well, no, so, you know, it's my district, and I get a lot of questions from neighborhood groups and stuff. I just want to be clear that I think you said 33 million in the future is earmarked for that. Is that in the budget?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
It's planned in the CIP, the six-year CIP.
It is in the CIP, okay, good, perfect, thanks.
Mr. Ray?
Thank you. You guys are so good. You do a great job, and you've always been very responsive. Please don't feel like you're in court. You're not in court here. I have a question, but I'm going to turn it into a comment. You talk about expansion of the trails. So as you move forward with the expansion, just think about security measures, you know, bad things happen when people are walking on the trails. So think about what you can do even to put cameras or anything that can make people safe. That's my comment.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, Ms. Meneses?
Yes, thank you for your presentation and your time answering these questions. You had mentioned that in order to get the roads to reach an average level of, I guess, performance or condition, it's $399 million, and that is equivalent to what the state has owed Baltimore County, I guess, for the past 10 years?
So the state reduced highway user revenues about 10 years ago that they gave to the local municipalities for things like road resurfacing. So if we go back and look at the amounts that we got 15 years ago per year and extrapolate that out over the last 10 years, it's about 400 million that we did not get because the state changed what they were giving to the municipalities. And we are exactly that amount behind in our road paving program. So although the county has continued to maintain our side of funding levels for road resurfacing, we've been really short for the last 10 years. So that can be seen in the condition of our roads.
Whose responsibility is it? Is it, I guess, our state legislators who cite for our...
It's, it's working with our state legislature, it's working with the governor's budget on what funding comes to local governments. I know that we're, you know, being warned of budget challenges, and it's making sure that we're advocating for what we need. So highway user revenue is generated from the gas tax. That's set at the state level, not at the county level, for what happens there and then how that funding flows downstream.
Okay. I also have some questions about the MRF and the options for replacement, you said. Are the options including like a different facility or just upgrading the current one?
Ideally, upgrading the current one in the current location.
Not finding a different location?
The logistics of that and the transfer of materials to that and all become very expensive. So ideally, it stays where it is to reduce those logistics, also reduces cost if it stays where it is. It's on a closed landfill that the county owns right now. The size, space that we would need for something like this is significant, so it's much easier if it stays where it is. But we're in early stages of that feasibility to look at how that can happen.
Okay. I have two questions about the Eastern Sanitary landfill, which is close to my heart since I am neighbors to it. How much, how much waste material gets transferred out of the county? And are you working towards contracts to increase that, or...
Yeah, there were new contracts put in place in the lives in the past year, so in short, essentially anything commercial, I'm the chief as always, anything commercial that comes from Baltimore County is transferred out. So three years ago, we put about 500,000 tons of material into the landfill. Last year, we put about 100,000. All of that is Baltimore County, that did not contribute to that, how we, that's part of the reason that we're going to get that. The other...
And is, how much does that cost to transfer that much?
We don't, we don't pay for it. So the commercial vendors pay for it. So we have a rate that they, when they, so they come and drop off at any of our three locations, that equivalent tonnage gets put in another truck, they get billed for that, and that tonnage goes elsewhere.
Oh, okay. My last question is the revenue from the electricity production from the Eastern Sanitary landfill. Who, does the Department of Public Works get that money, or...
From the gas?
Yeah, yes, for the electricity, yeah. No?
No, it doesn't come back to our...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'd have to look, I'm not sure how that's structured through our Office of Sustainability.
Oh, okay.
Sure.
I'm Matt Carpenter, we're deputy director of budget planning. The structure was a PPA. In fact, we paid for, we basically paid for the power into what's called a waterfall net metering. We're producing additional green power from there and then put into the grid essentially, and we basically buy that power essentially back from them, supplement our bills. So we're, but when you used to be at 120,000 kilowatt, million kilowatt hours, we're basically at this point, you know, in the backside, there's about 21 million kilowatt hours that are produced every year from that facility. So the true nature of what we buy from B G N E is only about, the reduction is about 150, 90, 100, because of that, that range that we now have. Any power that's going beyond what we can basically waterfall against our accounts, it is overproduced, that refund back, it's having to be back there.
And do you have a figure of how much that is, or...
It varies upon the production level. Within that, the last book, it could be roughly, the last, I think, bill was about 400,000 dollars. What that means is that there was more produced than we had essential income. But what we try to do is reline it up and add more power, you know, more accounts from our B G N E account to cover that. I'd rather say we're using it and applying it against our power that's actually coming in now. Not that I don't like money coming into the county, but I'd like to line up that production with what it's offsetting within the county's existing account structure. The county has roughly about 697 electrical accounts. Going across is about three of them, probably about, oh, 150, two hundred of them we use to initiate a waterfall. And as we, more or less, we'd like to try to get it sort of leveled out so that we're, like I said...
So it's zeroed.
Yeah, whatever. The way we basically worked in the idea that it was originally a reduction in our costs because the supply that was being costed was actually less than I could buy it on the, our grid pack energy, how we were cooperating with the energy, was getting a better supply price, so actually it wasn't generating a savings to the cost of, I guess, avoidance at that point. Eventually, that will even out to our contract, but our goal is to make it like a new, a new revenue, and basically not like that.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you for your presentation. Just a quick question for you. How have you, can you tell which parts of the county have more needs for the roads resurfacing, other parts of the county that have more, I guess, more need? And then how are you going to determine what, who gets what first, and how's that process?
Great questions. Yes, we can see that. We can see where there are more roads in the poor category than roads in the excellent category with this rating system. So each road is rated on the zero through 100 scale, 100th scale, each segment of road. What we are doing is going numerically. So at this point, we're only working on things under 60, under 50 in the rating system with the funding that we have. And then each road that we go to pave, we look at it to see, is B G N E about to do a project and they're going to rip up that road, and we just need to put a pin in it because it doesn't make sense to redo it for them to rip it up? Or does it need curb and gutter, too? And then we do the curb and gutter first, which could delay the paving a season for that road. So we're going in specific numerical order unless you get jumped, and you don't get jumped forever, you're still on the list waiting until one of those things happen, the utility work finishes or curb and gutter happens, and then you're back up with your numerical rating.
Excuse me. What part of the county does have the most on roads that are the condition you're talking about?
The eastern side of the county.
Eastern side, okay.
But I'm going to say, it's not like there aren't any poor roads anywhere else. It's just you see a bigger block of them on that side of the county.
You know, and do you know any reason why?
At a representation.
I just can't say, prior to me working at the county, to know why funding was allocated the way that it was.
Any other, Mr. Hinton?
I do have a quick question in the statement, to piggyback on what Mr. Johnson said. If, anyway, my question part, if there are constituents that are concerned about the quality of work from the DPW orders that are picking up trash, collecting trash, what would be the best way to address that?
Well, I'm going to add some clarification. It's outsourced. So
Okay, that's me.
The individual staff picking up the trash are an outsourced third-party hauler. There's like 100 and some plus different companies, different staff. But reach out to DPWT, Solid Waste, or our general email box, and we have those contracts with those haulers, we have those conversations with them if there's an issue with the staff or the actions of that hauler.
Got it, I appreciate that. Then my statement, hopefully this is a closing statement because I think we're all ready to go home. I would just want to revisit the Loop again, like what Mr. Johnson said about the roads on the east side being the worst. I mean, I think it's no secret that the east side of the county has felt like they've been left behind for decades, and we do need a lot of support and love over there now that we do have the 43 corridor, which has expanded. That is literally last chance to you for Baltimore County. That's where all the development is, that's the fastest-growing area in the county. You have the mall until they implode it and build more houses. You have CCBC, you have Franklin Square, the hospital, and you have 3,000 brand-new homes and taxpayers there, breweries, restaurants. You have so much there that can help for traffic calming with something like the Loop or some other, you know, attention that I think a lot of people would like to see over there to continue the growth so that we can get the things that we need. And I mean, when I hear some of the other areas that have been studied, I mean, no offense, but it just doesn't make sense. I understand Owens Mills because there's a lot of infrastructure over there, but you literally have everything in place for Loop, for some easy transportation, for safety, right? You know, if people are trying to cross 43, that's a dangerous road. A lot of accidents right there that we see all the time. So I definitely would ask that, maybe take a look at it or add that into your, your guys' calendars, just to take a look at it and see what happens, to see how that measures up to some of the metrics that you guys are looking at.
Happy to take a look at that. Just, I'll add some other facts out there for you so that, for all of you. We get funding from the state called Lots Funding. We get funding from the state called lots funding, which is for transportation, for transit specifically. Baltimore County has not been a big player in that field until more recently where we're trying to bolster that up and step into that dimension. The way that the lots formula is calculated is impacting our ability to expand. So we've been really trying to work with the state and taking a look at that. So Baltimore County gets about $1 million out of the state towards transit, and it costs about 3.5 million to run the Loop, give you ballpark here what we need from this money. We're 800,000 people in Baltimore County. MDOT only counts us as the population of Towson when they calculate us for the Loop, which means that they also count us for a poverty rate of Towson when they calculate us for the Loop. So we're being counted as 80,000 people when we're 800,000 people in Baltimore County. Comparatively, PG County, Montgomery County receive, one gets 20 million, one gets 45 million from the state toward transit, we get 1 million, 1 million. And I get it, they've had transit, they've, they've been in this game, but then you look at us against Harford County and Anarundo County and Howard County, we are getting less than half that all those counties are getting, and they're all significantly smaller than us because their entire populations are being counted. I know their entire population is not riding transit, just like our entire population is not riding transit, but we need to compare apples to apples. If everyone else is getting counted for their full population, Baltimore County should be counted for its full population.
Why is Baltimore County not?
We haven't gotten a clear answer. So the previous county executive, County Executive Elsheski, went out hard during our CTP meetings, which is our annual consolidated transportation plan, transportation plan, with all the MDOT modals, come out to Baltimore County, sit down with our elected officials, I gave him this backup and, and he used it and pushed on them, "What are you guys doing?" We've had some meetings with some of our state delegation to talk through this and try to have some other conversations about why this allocation is shorting Baltimore County so much. Not trying to ding the other counties, but we should get to play by the same rules. And those same rules would mean a couple million dollars for us, which is the difference between us expanding the Loop and not expanding the Loop at this point.
I appreciate that. So that, so those contacts would be from the Maryland State Department of Transportation, like those folks?
State Department, MTA specifically, or MDOT, we've been trying to push at these numbers.
I think we have some good relationships sitting on the board, so I mean, if there's any thing that myself or anyone else could do to help bridge that, no pun intended, we'd be happy to do that.
We, all we're looking for is count our whole population.
Yeah.
Seems pretty simple to put it in a spreadsheet.
Is there something that the county council can be doing?
I would say the same ask of them, too, is pushing this information that, you know, count our whole population towards our funding so we can start to serve more of our population.
Okay, any, any other questions, Mr. Scholman?
The summary of that meeting, who was there and what was...
For the CTP? Sure.
Any other questions, Mr. Hinton?
I hate to be the killjoy in the room, but I think we have to take a look at what we know is going to happen with federal dollars flowing to the state and state dollars flowing to the locals over the next few years. And so as we think about all these wish lists that we're putting together, things that are going to happen, I think the cold, hard reality is there's going to be a need to prioritize within the budget what gets done and no, no additional new things happening. So I just think we all have to be, be, look at this soberly and understand what, what the reality is going to be.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Miss Buckler, Katie, can you un...
I'm not used to having to use a microphone. I see in the news today that there's 53 water main breaks between Baltimore City and Baltimore County currently, most of that's due to the weather and the freezing temperatures. Is there anything that residents and/or county government can do to prevent that? I know at home, you know, in order for your water, your pipes not to break, you're supposed to trickle the water. Is there anything that we can do to prevent that county-wise?
We really can't, this is just a matter of, because we go through this cycle of warm and cold, only cycles, by the way, you're mentioning construction, and it's just the ground, the things underneath, nothing we can do about that. The age of the pipe that comes into play, and we're working on a placing date, but I think it's going to take a year to really play along with it. Unfortunately, no, nothing we can do.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, Ms. Buckler and your team, you guys did an amazing job, thank you for fielding all of our questions and comments. If there are no further comments or questions, we will adjourn. The next meeting of the Planning Board Committee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program will be Tuesday, January 21st at 5:30 PM. This meeting will be held virtually, and information for that meeting can be found on the Planning Board's webpage. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight, and this meeting is hereby adjourned. Have a great evening.